Order of trustees will now come to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Chair person, Patton.
Here.
Trustee Hay.
Present.
Trustee Solinger.
Here.
Trustee Grayberg.
Present.
Trustee Liberati.
Here.
The Corns present.
Okay, thank you. We do have a slightly different worded public comment tonight, so I'm going to read it to you because we do have a few people in here that aren't normally here. Members of the public who wish to address the Library Board of Trustees may come forward and speak on any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Library Board. The Board respects the right of citizens to present differing opinions and views. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. If you believe your item requires extended discussion or action, you may ask a member of the Board to place it on the Board's agenda for a future meeting. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda unless the matter is noticed on a Board agenda as an item on which action may be taken. The chairperson may prohibit public comment if the content of the comment is woefully disruptive of the meeting or by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounting to personal attacks or interfering with the rights of other speakers. So having told you all that, is there anybody who would like to comment at this time? If not, we will move on with approval of the minutes of the December 3 meeting. Have you all read over your minutes? Are there any corrections or additions or anything? And I'll entertain a motion that we accept.
Does Trustee Hayes all move to accept the minutes as provided?
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. The Friends of the Library report is in your packet information. The only thing I can add to it for her is our annual meeting took place after that report was turned in. We had an annual meeting on the 30th with a brunch instead of having a dinner meeting. We had a really good turnout. Everybody had a lot of fun. Everybody got better acquainted with some of the people that they don't normally see. We spent most of the morning honoring and showing our appreciation to all the volunteers who work in the bookstore, and then we had a short business meeting after that. So that's what went on for the Friends. We'll move on to the Board of Trustees business. And our first item on our business is the election of Chair and Vice Chair. I took this position as temporary chairperson when Sandy had to leave, and I think it's time for somebody else to take it over. So is there anybody who wants to put somebody's name in the bucket or somebody who just wants to put their own name in? Or I guess I can. Well, my husband would rather you didn't. I would like to put Jeremy's name into contention, okay?
Okay.
Is that all right? You would accept that?
I would accept that.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to nominate somebody? If not, want to make a motion to elect Jeremy as Chairman of the Committee?
I would make that motion, move to elect Jeremy as Chair of the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Jeremy, you have been elected Chairman of this Board. We'll get you a Vice Chair and then you can take over if you'd like. All right, is there a nomination for Vice Chair? Somebody who would like to step in? Now, I know you stepped out for a while, but would you be interested in taking the job? You'll still do the Vice Chair?
No, no, I would like to nominate Diane Solinger as Vice Chair.
And I would second that motion.
All right, then Diane will be the Vice Chair.
Do we have to vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay. Jeremy, you want to take over?
Okay.
That's pretty test-based, instead of giving you a hammer. Well, we can do that next time.
Okay, moving on to item B, B, the use of library gift funds as match for library parking lot safety solution on change design specifications.
And we have Patrick Pittenger here from Public Works to introduce to you the changes of your plan. That is in your pocket as well?
No, basically, no.
Now we get two pictures of it.
You are getting two of them, yes.
You're doing this quite, didn't you?
It's twice the number.
Okay, my name is Patrick Pittenger for the record, Transportation Manager, Carson City, Call the Board's Department. Actually, we have a couple more if anybody wants one. So I was, it's, time flies. I was here in September to discuss the issue of pedestrian access to the parking lot, something that, you know, that we agreed that should have been done 50 years ago when the street was reconstructed, that whole portion was reconstructed, and we were aware of the issues that were occurring. And as I had discussed with you at that time, our plan was to put in one access point near the crosswalk there, and that we were going to, well, the plan was that Public Works would basically handle at no cost to the library gift fund, all the installation of the concrete work, a down location, and the idea was that the, that a handrail, some sort of fencing along there to try to encourage people to actually use that place that was safer to walk, would be, would use up to, but not to exceed, $4,000 of library gift fund money to do the hand railing. I am not kidding to say that we've been working on this, our operations staff and engineering staff, you know, it's amazing how much this consumes, but among, juggling among 12 other things, I can't say it's been every day, but we have been working on this since last day, so you. The real struggle was to try to find someone to bid on the, on the handrails that we had suggested with library gift fund money, and what we found was that it was frankly far more expensive than we anticipated. It was, it was interesting. We just thought it was that much, and turns out our operations folks were right, it was far more expensive than we anticipated. And then, when very recently, we went to go build the concrete improvements that we originally envisioned, it turns out that there were, there were grade issues in the field and other issues that prevented that from going forward. So finally, we were able to schedule our concrete crew, they were all ready to start, and so basically, our engineer came up with, and I know this is only a schematic, these aren't detailed drawings, obviously, but between the engineer and our concrete crew, there are very talented people that actually work for the city, they were able to figure out a way to do this, which I, of course, realized changes, number one, that the railing was very expensive, and obviously, changes, you know, the fencing, which was going to be paid for with library gift fund account, so I thought it appropriate to approach Sina and tell her what we're up to. As luck would have it, I wouldn't have been in time for last week's meeting, and so, good news, the meeting is this week, so I can come and talk to you. So what we figured out, what's on this, what's on this drawing here, is that we found a way to make the connection, as we, as we discussed, so that people can get through there. It's actually really interesting to hear insight frankly of our concrete crew, because they are constantly out there building all year round, concrete sidewalks, walkways, and all sorts of things, the whole year, bus stop improvements, and they always have wonderful insights of what they see, even while they're out there working, how many people are already, you know, walking in these locations. So it's, so they just reinforce everything we already knew. So you probably saw, they actually poured the concrete this morning, once again, this is in the trust of the library fund. What's shown on here on that red line, and obviously, it gives it away, split rail fence, because that metal fencing was so, was so expensive, we have been doing, I think, a lot of places down, split rail fence, and Open Space did it all around about, we've done it, Public Works done it, our places, those, those places where we're doing three levels of split rail, but we think it's also appropriate here. It wouldn't be three levels, it would be two levels of split rail, we wanted it to be real high. But it is a far more cost-effective option, and so, the question before you this evening is, hopefully, you still want the fencing, are you agreeable to the split rail fencing? And if so, how far would you like it to extend? Because frankly, your money will go much further, and if you are interested, what's shown on here is this red line of, of, you know, from the sidewalk connection to the stop and the shelter end. If you're interested, it could go even further, frankly, and stay within that $4,000 of the original discussed, but I'm here to ask you what you're interested in for, if you are agreeable to the split rail fencing, I mean, you can just tell me to go wait in the morning, and I'll do it. That's fine, too. I remember, Phil, you haven't shared anything, so.
I know.
I'm just kidding.
So now it's straight up.
I'm worried about this guy. I'm worried about the notorious Jeremy. No, but anyway, that's about it. And we're just looking for input of would you like this, do we need to have the split rail fence installed, and if so, how far would you like it to go?
Just to review, since it's been several weeks.
Yes.
Purpose of the fencing is to keep people from climbing over the rocks and falling down?
Yes, to, yes, to encourage people to go where there is a safe place to walk and to frankly not go through the rocks, because that's where there have been issues in the past.
So funneling the trap?
Yes, to, to a place where it's, and indeed, the, you know, as I said, this northern connection, you know, they figured out that there was actually already a grade, so they could make an ADA compliant access point there, and the other one is, there's obviously a step, but it was actually, you know, it turns out the concrete crew, you know, maybe a little bit better than the engineer this time, because they know them all day long. It was only, it was a much simpler approach, and then all they had to do is cut down and frankly extend the concrete to the existing curb, and that ripped us for about.
And I can already tell you that there has been some success, because one of our teams who does happen to be in the work right now was yelled at today for trying to walk over the drying concrete.
Luckily, I have long legs, I was able to actually step over. Actually, you know, literally this morning, I was over at the board meeting, and I had two books to return, and once I checked out, when I saw you last week, I already finished them, and I walked right over and stepped over, so.
Well, my understanding was that the, the original step was going to be in the non-parking area.
Well, yeah.
And so, but you said the grade, you know, you know, it's kind of next to that, and the, and the idea of the fencing was, because it was going away from the library, if we were going to put the railing in to funnel them there so that they would go in, but now that when you're crossing the street and the new grade is going towards the library, I don't see the need to put a split rail fence.
Well, you have a good point there. This one is actually, you know, we were trying to go in a straight line, but you are correct. If you draw a line from that end of the crosswalk there to the front door of the library, which is actually where people are going, yes, that's where it is. Yeah, absolutely, that's why I'm here, to ask your opinion, you know, and I'm.
I mean, wasn't that the original intent?
Yes.
Was to funnel them down?
Yes, and, and, yes, so, yeah, you could make the argument that the, that because it's frankly more of a straight line as it is, with the revised implementation out there and the bushes, maybe you'll need fencing. Yeah, and now that you're actually more of a straight line, but like I said, yes.
One of my concerns is individuals who have parked in the parking lot, who after library hours, they're here for the community center, they, there was an older, they built themselves, that's kind of what brought this all up, but we do have individuals who park and use the Friends facility, and if they're coming across the crosswalk there, and they, because those rocks are still, like, it's flat on this picture, but those rocks are still at an angle, and so if somebody decided, oh, I don't want to walk all the way around to where I can get into the parking lot, and they walk there, that is a hazard.
And then they're actually walking to the parking, so cars are meant to be.
Not only them, but those are large rocks, and they're inherently unused.
Well, and an interesting thing is, is that I actually learned this, you know, from one of engineers, the size of those rocks is actually intentionally that size to discourage people from walking into that.
When they're wet, they're slick.
Then, in that, in that vein, then you need to bring the fence all the way down to the entrance, where you drive in and all the way up toward the ADA sidewalk is. I mean, if your intent is to keep them off the rocks, then you're going to have to put the fence all the way around. You just can't have 10-foot fence there and then let everything else open, and they're going to cross over there. No, you either do all of it, or you do none of it.
Do we know what the cost of the current scope of the work is? We haven't even had our costs yet, but we will. I'm afraid to look, but, but that's okay. But, I mean, of the fence itself? Yeah, this fence here, I mean, they, they thought that this fence would be less than $2,000, frankly, more of a fencing pad, but, you know, more accessible.
You've got bigger rocks?
Yeah.
Sharper rocks, right?
Yeah, more difficult to navigate over.
Well, no, I think those were already selected for that purpose.
When you discussed extending the fence, did you mean the lower edge of the photo that was extended?
Yes, exactly, extending it along there. We actually looked at it with our crew this morning when I was out here. I think what would make the most sense, if you were to extend it, is that the fence would actually be on the back of the sidewalk along Route Street, and then if you extend it down along the parking spaces, because we don't want to, we don't want to take on any bushes, you know, that's not our goal in any way ever, approach tree, and there's a utility pole on the way, right by the sidewalk there, if you were to extend it further down, probably extend it further down closer to the parking spaces there, it would be on the, on the backside of those rocks, so I don't think it would be very, it wouldn't stand out there unless you're being frankly partially hidden behind the bushes and the landscaping.
I'm sure you've walked in the preliminary.
Yes.
See there's a place where people are already cut through between you and the crosswalks to the library.
Yes, yes, yeah, we know.
So I'm not sure if there's a solution to that, the fence is maybe held there or not, because I know I'm not the only.
Are you planning on jumping the split rail with the door guard?
No, of course not, that's my point of extending it.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Because people use the.
Yes, so.
So they'll just get a lot of whining, that's okay.
Put another sidewalk cut in.
Right.
Well, no, they shouldn't do that.
Yeah, there's no hurry. Well, your pleasure.
So within, within the budget, the side of.
Where, you know, I think that, I think that the $4,000 would get you down the driveway down there, if not at the real close, and as long as it's close, we'll, we'll cover the difference, and that's a $4,000.
What about going down towards the ADA?
I don't, that area is really, I mean, I don't see the big demand to walk right there between the, between there and the ADA access, because it's a wider area, that's the other thing, too, where even though we have these rocks here, it's not that wide, I mean, some people might actually just step over it. That area nearby the sign is much more physically blocked because it's wired, it's got the bushes, it's got the sign. I don't, I personally don't see the need, but I'm open.
My concern was that it would, it would actually inhibit access to the sign, to the sign doors, and we are in the process of trying to fix it, but my, that would be one of my concerns, is it's a big metal sheen over it that opens out, like, towards the parking lot, if you put a fence there, you'd have to not put a fence during where the sign actually is.
So. And frankly, if you edit it, you know, from the crosswalk going south, there's nothing that would stop people from heading north in the future if you were still interested.
You said you've been using the split rail fences all around, how, how do they hold up?
Oh, we've, no, we've been doing, we've been doing quite well, actually, and indeed, some of the other applications we've been doing there have been more, for example, we did once a few years ago on, along Hills Belles Road, east of Roundabout there, we had a situation where we had, and this is why it's a good one, we had a couple hundred kids a day walking down the middle of the street, because there was no sidewalk even coming through and all that stuff, and we actually built the sidewalk, but then we also intentionally put up the wood fence for, okay, now we've built you a big wide sidewalk, stop somebody through here. And it's, it sounded, it sounded very well, and I know Open Space looked into it as well before they installed it on our crew, although there should have been, to keep, actually, I was confused as well.
I'll ask one more question, I think that the Board would be potentially interested in, is with the maintenance for that fencing, would that be something that Public Works would be able to take care of?
Yeah, I presume what is going to fall in the category of everything else in the city. I live near the intersection of Hillview and Coons, and some, we put up a nice white fence with big nine-dot markers on it, so people know the road doesn't continue, and about a month and a half ago, something like right through happened up there, and yes, it's been rebuilt, and we use local contractors. And we don't have a fence crew, a concrete crew. Well, it seems to me that the, the southern border is what we need to distance incentivize walking through. Right. So I would entertain a motion.
I would make the motion that we use the split rail fence and extend it all the way down to the decorative brick of the driveway, if you're $4,000 budget.
Okay, great. Oh, yeah, maximum $4,000. Ask what's previously discussed. Run other funding issues, but if, but I can tell you, if it's not, if it's not a major funding issue, we'll just do it.
Those in favor, some of them, say a aye.
Thank you, Brad.
Say no.
Yeah, I said no. Don't say no.
So I'm going to go on the record here, just to ask the Board members a quick question, and I want to apologize in advance, during item four, all in the Board's call to the Director, who will come back, so we're quite clear what happened, the Board's had a motion and said, during Patrick's presentation, as the Director announced his motion, we established a conflict, the motion carried. It's my understanding that, again, I apologize for that, but I want to make sure that you do this, you know, including in accordance with the procedural procedures, but I was told that the motion made a second, there's actually no, no call.
That's correct.
And if that's correct, I'll ask.
On the chair, not on the bike chair.
Right, and my, that I did hear the second part for the election of Vice Chair, there was a motion about the second, and the vote carried out, so that motion did carry unanimously. I would ask the Board just to make sure that we establish a clear record, so that it can be analyzed later, that the vote, the United Chair is actually being afforded. I'm going to ask the Board to bring back the bike board and call for the election of Chair again. I know being a little bit of a stickler to the nomination, I would.
That's my fault. That's my fault, okay. Would you like to?
Oh, I'm sorry. For the record, Dan, you, the Carson City PA's office, I haven't had a chance to introduce myself and the members tonight, and I, and he is out.
Okay, we'll go back, and we had a nomination of Jeremy Hayes to be the Chairman of this Board, and I second it to that motion, so I would like to say all those in favor.
Aye.
And close. So that's Jeremy officially, Chairman of the Board.
Moving back to item five, Part C, presentation of the Library's strategic plan.
Okay, so I'm going, this is Steven Boyd, Library Director for the record, I'm going to walk you through essentially what changes that we have talked about over the last few meetings. What you'll have in your packet is, the first page is going to look something like this, and this is going to explain to you, and I'll go through this, of what we have done to change the strategic plan. It's still, it is a revision, we've just changed how it is organized, as well as some of the items in the strategic plan, based on the discussions that we have had in the past, and most of those changes are going to be found, I'll find one for you, in red. So if you see changes to wording, it's going to be in red, and then there are a couple items that I did not leave in, but we have removed from the strategic plan, which I do have that information that I can provide to you as well. So what we've done to change the organizational structure of the strategic plan is rather than, so the 2014 that you'll see here, I'm going to wait, Phil, you all can get to that page, this is what the strategic plan looked like. So you would have a goal, your objectives, and then an action taken essentially by the libraries, and it was organized as three goals, and so that's how the plan was organized. The revision essentially flips that triangle, and it gives an action, or what the library is doing, the objective, and then the goal. So, and it's organized into five areas. So once we get through the vision, values, and mission, and the executive statement, what you'll see is the strategic goals, what that means, what success looks like for that goal, then you'll see the strategic goal number two, what that means, and what success looks like. This is the exact same wording out of the previous strategic plan, unless it's in red, then it's been changed somewhat, but this is, so this information is just organized differently than it was prior, then you'll see the same thing with strategic goal number three. Then we go into our priorities, and this is where you will see them organized in infrastructure, programming, staffing, space, and collaboration. And then we have objectives under each of these areas, and we'll have the objective listed, and then we'll have what goals that objective fulfills. So you'll see that as well. So this first one, infrastructure, objective one, expand website and technology for a digital branch, reemphasizing the importance of libraries, embracing the world, the world of conversation, community, and collaboration using technology tools, and that fulfills all three goals. So does everyone understand how it is now organized? Does everybody like how it is now organized?
Yeah.
I think it's good that it cross-references, you know, where each of these priorities are filling our goals, or achieving our goals, that's, that's good.
And so, the first couple changes you're going to see under infrastructure, objective number three, we've added in here, because we've put two objectives that appeared in different goals that were just reworded, that were worded very similarly, but somewhat differently, to include maintain a partnership with Charter Communication. And we have done that. Our fiber, though it is expensive, it's $1,150 a month, it is much less than if we were not a nonprofit, or a library, or an educational type of institution, and so that partnership with them has reduced it by about 60 percent. Objective number four, we've added, so it says provide materials and resources that support learning, recreation, and local civic engagement. Again, this is something that we've combined, and that we talked about combining. Promote and expand the use of technology within the library's digitarium with emphasis on partnerships with formal education, community, educators, family, and youth, in particular teens. I think that we've established this space that we're in currently as that technology space, and so I think we needed to identify that in our goals. Objective number seven is to connect patrons with online learning resources such as lena.com, certification programs, and MOOCs, which are massive open line, online, open online courses. This was one of the goals that was vague, and you had directed us to find a better way. This was one of the goals that was vague, and you had directed us to find a better way to state what we were trying to accomplish. And I think that this clears it up, and we're trying to provide outside opportunities for our patrons to learn, to be lifelong learners. On fourteen, on page fourteen, we get into programming. And we've added to the expand the summer reading program, which we will pilot and extend in summer reading program in April, to integrate with the governor's Read by Three or by Third Grade program. That was something that we had discussed. On page fifteen, there are no changes to any of the objectives. On sixteen, we have reworded the objective number seven, which is to encourage a deputy sheriff to visit library spaces during regular operating hours, including deputy parking, explore video surveillance system installation, and then the example of the Henderson Police Department using the parking space to fill out their reports and to do some of that. I had the opportunity to do a ride-along with the sheriff's department, and I think that that has given me some ideas on how we can approach this in a manner that will encourage a sheriff's department to want to participate. And there are no changes on seventeen. And there are no changes on eighteen. Next steps, I have left the same. And then on the acknowledgement page at the bottom.
You almost pointed out, I'm sorry.
On my page, there is a change at the top.
Evaluation of the need.
That's still weird, mine is red.
So is mine.
Oh, what is it, change when the red is red, the light is red? That is.
Maybe the red cartridge ran out.
I don't know, it's our coffee machine, all of these came off the coffee machine. Evaluation of the need for part-time, for a part-time or full-time volunteer coordinator, that was something that we had talked about. Okay, so then, next steps, there are no changes. On page twenty, the changes that you will see here is at the bottom. I've indicated the revision date of January, it is now February, we did not have a meeting last week. And the individuals who were involved in that revision process. So are there any questions or comments about the revision of our strategic plan?
I would note the spelling of my last name on page twenty. There's no E in my name.
See it right there, go ahead.
Sina, would there be another change to the strategic plan between now and nineteen, twenty nineteen?
We should, as indicated in the strategic plan, you do indicate that you want to evaluate and look at the strategic plan every two years.
Okay, so what I would like to recommend is that on the pages where we've made changes, and they're in red, that we do what you did at the bottom, that say revision, and put the date in.
Would you like me to?
And I would like to leave it in red.
Can I do another color other than red?
Oh, yeah, you can do any color you want. But, but I would like to see what the changes with the date.
And then in two thousand eighteen, you'll be able to see.
Right.
And.
What we changed in two sixteen.
Purple or?
Whatever.
Red is just a second color.
No, yeah. Chartreuse. Lime green like a fat wall.
I can do that, so that is not a problem.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, so, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion. Just to point in this a minute. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Here none? Moving on with the agenda, going to item six, part A, report concerning fiscal year 2015 library statistics.
Okay, so I would like to indicate to you that you have three pages, they're back and front, and the numbers are small. I can provide to you and put onto our website the statistics, they're public record, public knowledge. These are statistics from the library. So what you'll see, the first page is two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Your second page that has some pink on it is gonna be your two thousand fourteen, fifteen, or FY15 statistics. And there are a couple items that I just want to point out to you. I was asked to provide these, I think that it is important for you guys to be able to have a look at what is going on in the library. But I do want to point out some positives, and then some indicators in two thousand sixteen of where we are exceeding the year before's items. So, the first one you'll see here is access services. So we have a total material circulation at the main library, the brick, and the branch anywhere. The brick closed in January of two thousand fifteen, and so you will not see any statistics for the brick after that. And it is indicated in the statistics for FY15 and sixteen of information about the brick. The brick is now in the main library, but we don't need separate statistics of items that are used for that, they're in with all of the statistics for the library. So you'll notice that we have three hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and seventy circulations of materials. That's quite a large number for the size of library that we have. It's highlighted in blue here. So then, we also have, at the end of two thousand fifteen, registered patron count of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-four. That is significantly better than the majority of our nation in the amount of citizens that we have registered with a library card who've been active in the past five years. That is a really good number. Most libraries don't have 30 percent of their community registered. So, then we're gonna go down, if you have any questions about any of that, I'm more than happy to answer, to the total door count at the main library. So we have two hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixteen individuals coming in the library every year. That averages one thousand fifty-eight people per day that we are open. So this doesn't count holidays, other days that were not open. This year, we were closing after the year on Sundays, so let's count those days.
Is there a monument?
We have a door counter that's on the backside of this light panel here, and not how we pull that number.
Yeah, cool.
So. And, you know, we do account for people coming in and out. So this is the number of people coming in and out. It is true real numbers. So, in our library loans, those are items that, and some of you as library patrons may have asked for them in the past. I can't find it here at the Carson City Library, I'd like to get it from another library in the Klan system in Nevada. Or can I get it from another library somewhere in the United States? We actually, in FY15, had eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-seven in our library loans. Throughout the system. So then on the backside, what you'll see, and I didn't highlight it in blue, but I wanted to indicate under reference questions, as of January, end of January two thousand and fifteen, we had forty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-eight reference questions. That's seven months throughout the year. So just remember that number when we go to two thousand sixteen. So our total number of reference questions was eighty thousand one hundred and fifty-two. So that is gonna conclude my report on the fifteen statistics. I have also included the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen statistics for you. Since we haven't provided that in the past, I think that's important for you to have. And then, would you like me to just continue, or do you want to call for the items?
Actually, I had a quick question on it. And I know that this is, this is probably a canned report, right? So this is the, the reporting software that you use to collect this data is probably putting this out, this isn't in like Excel.
We have many different ways that we get some of these numbers, so do you have a question about a specific?
So, because my background is a data nerd, would we be able to get this in an Excel spreadsheet, or another more manipulatable?
This, yeah, so that question, this is an Excel spreadsheet.
Oh, okay, perfect.
And I can provide that, I can also put it up on our website, so I'll have access to it.
Excellent, because that way I could look at year-over-year and fiscal year-to-date changes and stuff like that, which would be amazing.
I, absolutely.
Okay, moving on to item six, part B.
Okay, so, two thousand sixteen, so so far in two thousand sixteen, we were going to go until December, but I was able to provide the January statistics for the most part in here as well, because we are now in February. So what you're going to see is, so far, we have through the circulation at the main library and at the branch anywhere, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and sixty, nine, six hundred and ninety-six items circulated. We have patrons registered at thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four, which is an increase from July of last year. And you'll see here that we also have indicated where we have deleted patrons. We do do a patron purge occasionally, but when we, we do delete patrons, as we do. If they've asked for it, they've lost their card, and they don't want another card, there are reasons that we do that. So then you'll see the total door count at the main library, so far this year, is a hundred and forty thousand three hundred and thirty-eight, which is an average of one thousand one hundred and thirteen people per day. So that is an increase from what we saw last year. Okay, and then, on the back here, you're going to see instead of reference questions, you're gonna see questions. And the reason for this is, in July of this year, the library started using something called desk stats. So instead of each desk clicking a clicker every time any question was asked, whether it be where's the bathroom, or how do I find my ancestor who passed away, and there are which way you're gonna move out of the field. They were all treated equally. So what desk stats lets us do, and I can give you guys access to this, so we only have five different licenses, so if I do give you access, I'd ask that you not use it while the library is open. But you can see in that, what we've changed our questions to, so we have directional questions, general assistance, polar circulation questions, reference, technology, envisionware, which is logging on to the computer, hardware, finding information, e-reader, email help, how to use Lynda.com, overdrive databases in OPAC, and BrainPizerTutor.com. And so we have separated out our questions into those areas, and those are the overview of the areas, that is not every single area. What it also lets us do is it lets us track, did we spend one minute helping this patron, or did we spend 20 minutes helping this patron? And so we're able to, it's, it looks like an Excel spreadsheet, and when you click on it, essentially it tallies that question wherever you decided to make that tally. So, as of January two thousand sixteen, we're at fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven. So again, an increase from last fiscal year. Pretty significant increase from last fiscal year. So there are questions about the statistics. And feel free to ask if there's something specific that you're looking for, or trying to figure out how the library is doing something, feel free to ask. We can pull more statistics, these are the statistics we choose to track. And then you'll also see at the bottom of each of these spreadsheets, it's gonna say, do we have staff-specific programming information? There's some, there are statistics that we have to keep, that the state library requires us to report. And so you're trying to make sure that what we're collecting in desk stats, the staff is collecting every day, and the program statistics that we're collecting fulfills a purpose. There's a reason why we're collecting it, there's a reason that we want to either tell someone why this is important, or it's required that we tell someone how much usage that we have. And so, just keeping those in mind, we can usually pull statistics on most anything. Right now, we are working, since September, we've had the fiber, and I know that we've had more Wi-Fi usage from patrons just talking about using the Wi-Fi more. But we are working on getting a solid number of how we can tell if there's a minute to use, those types of things, because we've changed the system. And so we're working on getting those steps.
No questions for Sina? Moving on to item six, part C.
Okay, so the next item that you'll see in your pocket is the budget. As usual, this first page is the gift fund, it's the 101-1, and the back, or not the gift fund, sorry, the city fund is 101-1 and 101-2. So this is where we are currently with the city. We are 58 percent of the year last. You will see in salaries that we are very close to on track. We, and you might go, but wait, you have positions that aren't filled, there should be salary savings. There is salary savings, but we did have two retirees in this fiscal year, which has created not really any salary savings that you can see in the percentage of a budget that is spent. And you'll see that under any leave payoff that you see there. So the, the only item that is over is our telephone budget. That is where, it was not budgeted in our last year's budget, but that is where we charge our fiber connection to. And we will be shifting some of our budget to be able to cover the telephone budget. So are there any questions about the 101? Okay, so the next page that you'll see is the library gift fund, which is the 230. And this is going to have twelve pages. They're all over line item expenditures, since you are the authorizing group over this fund. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain those. But you will also see at the back, this is an Excel spreadsheet versus the printed off from the city HTE reports, the specific funds within the gift fund that you have authorized. This is your FFNE and the Digitarium funds. So these are tracking specific expenditures within those amounts of money that were approved. Are there any questions with any of those?
Under books and periodicals, we are at a hundred and seventeen percent.
Yes, you have read that right. So what that is, I mean, and I would have to look at some of the detailed budget here, is that the book lease was charged to the wrong account, and that book lease is a large chunk of money. About twenty thousand dollars, seventeen thousand dollars? chunk of money, about $20,000, $17,000? And I'm pretty sure that Debbie can catch these. Yes, that is correct, because you'll see for the collection FOL, which is 0630, you're going to see 0% expended.
Oh, yeah.
That's why.
I see.
Okay.
So, what's the average out of those two? And feel free that if you do need to look at it and then ask questions at the next board meeting or ask questions, ask those questions.
Right.
You don't have to ask them right now, because it's not your only chance.
So, there are no other questions right now? So, in that case, we can move on to item six, part E, report concerning activities and operations of the library's legislative board.
Okay, so, one of the items that I did want to talk to, talk to you all about today is the process of hiring for senior library assistants and for our essentially replacement first aid needs position. So, we have completed interviews for the senior library assistant, we have made an offer, we have not got for that offer yet, it was made today. So, we will hopefully have somebody onboard for that position soon. That position, we felt was the more important position to get hired immediately, and so we will now begin work on the manager position for that place. The second item I did want to do, and he's already introduced himself as Damian here, and then Iris Yao is here as well from the DA's office. We did lose Joe Ward, as you all know, he moved on to Dieter, but we do have some very qualified individuals here who are willing to help, and I think that's great. And I think Iris, you're the one who will be at the board meeting for credit. Okay, are there any other questions before we get to reports from the other members of our staff?
Seeing none, we can move on to item seven, part A, report concerning adult services.
Okay, I will be giving the adult services reports, not this. You have a report here in your packet. Library plus literacy plus lifelong learning, thank you for helping our community soar. And so, this is one of the focuses of our adult services department at this time, is creating a fun, welcoming, learning environment upstairs in our digital learning center. We're happy to announce that this month, Thursday, or the month of January, there were also an introductory Photoshop class. So, beyond our basic level classes, we have been offering some more advanced classes again, which is really nice to see, and members of our community are teaching those. We are hoping that when we do bring somebody onboard to replace the position that retired, that we're able to then again offer some, some of these more interesting, you know, business-focused, community-focused classes, web development, things of that nature. I also wanted to announce for Andy that February 18th, 19th, and 20th is the Film Festival over at the Community Center, the library is a sponsor, the Friends are a sponsor as well, WNC, I think that might be, looking at you, Phyllis.
I'm thinking that's always on the list.
And though I don't have the names of the films currently, the only family-friendly film is Friday Night. And it is a good film, it's about an Iranian boy, don't recall the name of it at this moment. Saturday Night's film is A Royal Affair, and it's gotten a lot of attention because there is one of the individuals who is nominated for Golden Globe Academy Award, one of those two, in that film as well. So, feel free to come out, it is free to the public. That is something that the Film Festival Committee through the Friends is really committed to doing, is to have those available to the public for educational opportunities.
I think the family-friendly one was something about children from heaven.
I think that's the topic.
And the first one, what would manage cherry blossoms. So, that takes care of the brain paper.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, moving on to item seven, part, I'm sorry. Moving on to item seven, part B, report concerning access services.
Okay. For the record, I'm Kathy Rush, Access Services Manager. I'm giving a report for Access Services, which, as you probably know, is a combination of circulation services and technical services. So, this last month in circulation services, we have new library cards introduced, which is very exciting, and it has been a great way to connect people with, back to the library with new cards or get new cards. We have a lot of people coming in to get those cards, and because we have three different types of cards, it's very, it's much easier to see who has premier card, who has a regular card, and who has a regular card. And so, that part's been really great. Also, having those, those teaching cards for them to use, as well as the teaching card for the Browser's Corner, it's been very popular, and I hope you see a lot of people coming and using those.
Tremendous use of those already.
Oh, good. And then, of course, the, a little extra column, I guess, sticky barcodes that are on the card assembly when we first get the card, gives us the opportunity to not only use one of them for our applications, so that things are more accurate and just easier, but also gives additional sticky barcode for the patron to use, so that they may always be able to carry their card with them, they can keep track of their kids' cards if they want to, by having those stickies in their mazes and stewarding. And it just means they're going to come to us less often with the question of, "I have my card," or "I don't remember who it was," or whatever. So, that's all been good. And we also are allowing people to replace their old cards or their lost cards at no cost, given with no number, and I think that's really going to be helpful for the data board, you know, really wonderful. In technical services, we, I have been attending a series of catalog meetings with the planning catalogers, we are doing one a month, and the reason that we're bringing the catalogers together is to talk about our shared catalog and how we can make the information that the patron sees in that catalog more, more easy to understand, it's more accurate, they can find materials more easily. And so, we are talking about collections, we're talking about call numbers, we're talking about, but just the basic mechanics of how to make the library more accessible. And so, that is something that we're doing, and we believe that will help people, you know, find material. Any questions?
Moving on to item seven, part C, report concerning youth services.
For the record, Aubrey White, library assistant, librarian, department of trustee library. Heather wanted me to focus on the programs that we have been doing on Saturdays near the library. You have a report, so you can see everything else that we've been doing. As you may be aware, we have several programs that we do on a regular basis here on Saturdays. One has the Lego Club program, where kids get to come in and even formally take Legos, build with them, do whatever they want. It's been very successful, kids come in every month and are constantly asking me when the next Lego Club is, because this month they, you forget. And then, the other program that we do on a regular basis is called Love on a Leash, and that's when we have therapy dogs come in from the organization, that sit down with the dogs, and they let the kids read to them, or if they can't read, you know, show them pictures, pet the dogs. It helps the kids develop social skills, and everyone's excited to see the dogs. But the big programs that are mentioned in the report that I wanted to provide you with some more detail on, the first one is the Habits of Minecraft program. I've given you some information in the past, but it has been phenomenally successful. I have kids coming back every month, they're learning new things. Every month, we have a different theme, either structural engineering, electrical engineering, et cetera, and we've had professionals come in and show the kids the real-world application of what they're doing in Minecraft. If you haven't seen Minecraft or played with it all before, the best way to describe it is that it's Legos and video games combined into one. Kids are dropped into a world, they're given tools and resources, and they can build just about anything that you can run at them. And so, what they've been working on as part of our eight-month program is a city, complete with roads, infrastructure, lighting, they pull nine yards, dealing with grade six through 10, we had to create a jail very quickly. But they're learning about what it takes to create and run a city.
Can you get them to redesign car systems?
Well, we're training them to be able to learn how to do that for real, so maybe, maybe someday they're getting to it. And the other program that we're doing is a family reading program that we're actually providing the space for, hosted by the Northern Nevada Literacy Council, and they receive a grant through United Aid Northern Nevada in order to promote early literacy. If you notice in the report, the age range that we're targeting is birth, repair, grade, that is purposeful, to go in line with the Read by Three initiative. And we just had our first program last weekend, we had over a dozen kids and even more parents in the space, they worked on the theme Where We Live. So, they created a mock-up of a city using paper bags and crayons and other materials, and we read stories together of matching subjects. And if you look on the library spacebook page, I did upload an album of photos if you'd like to see. It, it went extremely well. I had parents coming up to me after the end of the program, saying that there are older kids who were with them, like, "I wish this had happened at the library when I was a little kid." So, it, it went very well, and I look forward to seeing increased numbers. We've already done outreach and promotion of, of the literacy program, we're going to keep pushing to put that information in the hands of more people, and I look forward to seeing more people out there. Do you have any questions for them?
I do. So, for the Habits of Minecraft, you said that the, the range that you're looking for, sixth to 10th grade, right?
Correct.
And you've got a pretty good number of participants for it. Have you been doing anything, and I'm going to show my nerd another side of my nerd. Have you been doing anything with Boolean logic operators or anything like that, that the Redstone system in that game can teach?
No, we did, we did do, we've done very basic things with them, with the Redstone. We wanted to teach just strict electrical engineering, so we had some of them in with, with like a basic circuit board.
Right, right.
And show them how to turn on, on and off the light. We could, of course, expand it. Each month, we're doing, we're doing a different theme, so we haven't really had a chance to go back and revisit the things that we've done already. So, like, like next, this month is economics, next month is agriculture, we're going to keep going on. We're hoping to do the program again, so we could always incorporate more advanced concepts, because probably we're going to be getting the same kids in front of that. And I should mention, because we have a lot of interest in this, we have been making exceptions, it is a current funded program, so we have to follow our outline pretty closely, but given the number, the amount of interest, we have been allowing fourth and fifth graders to participate as long as they show signs of being capable of interacting and engaging with an older audience. The reason we've been stuck to the majoring is, is because it is closer to a classroom environment than, say, the Lego Club, where they're just coming in and doing whatever they want. They have, they have assignments that they have to complete by the end of each day, if they don't complete them, then they aren't allowed to advance on to the next topic. So, we, we keep a pretty close eye on what they're doing. Minecraft ECU is a version of Minecraft is designed for classroom use, so we have a wide span of control when it comes to administering the program. Any other questions?
The grant goes with Minecraft, which determines what's studied each month, and it gets progressively more difficult as I play around.
We, we developed the themes for each month, we didn't write them into the grant, but the way we designed it is so that they would have a fully functioning city. For instance, in the first month, all they did was build structures, then in the second month, they had to use Redstone to light the city, to automate their doors, automate their houses, the month after that, then they had to expand to outside of the city, then, then they built roads connecting to those areas that they were expanding to. So, it's, it's a progression in the sense that we want a fully functioning city by the end of the program.
It's structural progression as opposed to...
Any other questions?
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, part D, report concerning youth liaison board trustees.
Excuse me, I'd love to ask permission to share my concern about the library. Can you do something?
Can you have a seat and wait for a public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm Hannah Vane. I'm Leah Van Veen, and we're part of a club associated with high school, and the library called Team Leadership Council, and what we do is do annual event for students around Carson City. Our next event is on February 27th, and it's going to be a winter snowdown.
At this event, we're having melkens, ice cream, and we will popcorn and many activities.
Winter snowdown? Winter snowdown, it's just like winters, winter.
Excellent.
Where is that?
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be healthy.
Is it the Titoria?
Yes, and it's for teenagers who are thirteen and seventeen.
All right, moving on to item eight, board members announcements and RFIs, requests Okay. In that case, we'll move on to item nine, public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the library board of trustees may come forward and speak on any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the library board. The board respects the rights of citizens to present differing opinions and views. Comments may be limited to three, three minutes per person. If you believe your item requires extended discussion or action, you may ask a member of the board to place it on the board's agenda for a future meeting. No action can be taken on a matter raised under this item, this item of the agenda unless the matter is noticed on a board agenda as an item on which action can be taken. The chairperson, me, may prohibit public comment if the comment is, if the content of the comment is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or mounting to personal attacks or interfering with the rights of other speakers.
Where should things be appropriate for?
Just up there.
And state your name for the record.
Yeah.
My name is Slava Kalapai. I'm resident of question seat since 1990. I got my car probably a few months ago. Still wish my car would be. We can have new ones right now. I come up with something about children as a concern, not just for other parents, because they talk about this. Or watch, or inconvenience, or children, which is on, see the father of two children. My son is 11 just earlier, and my daughter is 12. We have access to the home, to do the homework. And homework is not nice. Me and work with maybe the whole. And difficulties we give, whatever way to do the homework or whatever, which is we have access to the computers. We have at least ten, but someone for the game, someone for the homework. I'm not judging how many of them allow just to play, or how many just do the work. But what I came was a really hard situation for my kids to concentrate. And it's not just my kids, any other kids. Those computers sitting in the next week's chat, eight computers for the games and two for the homework. Anyone problem themselves, if you try to concentrate or try to read a book, you will have to read in some quiet place. So that space is all for you, so you can concentrate while you're reading. Might be need to bring something or on your mind, pull out your mind, to see if you understand what you're trying to accomplish. And when you sit in next week's, playing computer games, it doesn't matter how many. One or eight, it sounds like the library create a simulator, a simulator for the kids. There can be girls in the pool, I mean, matters. They scream, they talk loud. You can describe yourself, but it's loud. I try to make some comments, might be not appropriate in the beginning, honestly, might be. But that's parameters to that, I mean, for the kids. The work's done because it's a library. They don't get addition by stuff, and they and they should be managing my kids for four months. I think it was six, but I'll just see the rest of the time on the highway. And I'd like to supervise my kids while doing homework, because when you see those behind you, let's just switch back to the games, which are muted, or something, or just talking to each other, playing with each other. So I see it's best that you have supervision. So my main concern, which is I have various one, the bringing in another one, and especially for the lady who we charge for the youth. She said, "Not what we can do." I cannot stop, because I get in trouble myself. And it might be helpful, but then you can derive conditions for the library for these four to study. I'm not the scientist, I'm not the authorities, but I suggest that in the beginning, we'll just move computers for the study separately. I don't want kids to be, I don't want kids to be, because it's gonna be a pool. It's gonna be a scene, you have to use them, just in the beginning. But when it starts to study, which is library, you can be designed as a place where you can relax, where you can accomplish something for your school, for your work, or something. Something designed as a gaming room. And what you keep, I feel my tackle came down, but I have all the hair, I have no hair, but it feels like finally, nobody cares. I'm not gonna block the walk, but I'm not excited to do it, to do the homework in a city, basically, out of this. So I don't know what you're gonna do, but as a parent, as many other parents, I'm don't just desire that you need to bring the kids present in, or in our, so they would completely dedicate that time to study. Not just, it's not that you're trying to concentrate. And the way we position for the youth group or room, she said, "We have more room on boys' room." Not this, not exactly, but in other words, the way I understand, kids can be more than a kid. So it's more than. And to me, I know already those manuals, but from my understanding, if you kind of in the library, I'm trying to keep quiet. It's not, just be quiet, respect, be quiet. This is library. Just not more, is it? This is library, you should understand, you have to be quiet. We keep recording, we have no money. So I'm working that. So it's not designed for children who have a room as a residence. I mean, it's arrived, and we don't have to conduct it, because it's a garden, or it's a machine, two walls. But do I see the rest of the library should be keeping peace?
Thank you for your comments.
And yeah, before I leave, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I'd like to know your decision on my proposal.
So we can't take action on anything that isn't an agenda item?
I'm just asking, I'd like to know what you guys decided to do, just kind of.
Seeing no other public comment forthcoming, we can move to item 10. We'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Seeing no motion.